We all set?
We should be all set, but I am going to start sharing my screen. Apologies for the delay.
I will get started. Good evening. I am calling this public hearing to order in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC, 131, Section 40 in the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code Ordinance is Chapter 7-1.4. The Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public even, uh, hearing this evening on October 22nd, 2025, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearings will be followed by our regular meeting and in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Uh, could staff please identify themselves?
Eleanor Edmerin with the Environment Department.
DeeDee Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Max Harlidge with the Environment Department.
Great. Thank you. Now I'll call the role of Commissioners President, Commissioner Sullivan.
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Laney.
Amy Laney.
Commissioner Estes Smargiazi.
Steve S. Smargiazi.
Commissioner Herbst.
Ann Herbst.
Great. Thank you. Uh, just want to turn it over to DeeDee to talk about our October 29th Community Information Session.
And, um, also adding one more thing to our list before we opened up for the hearing. Uh, also just wanted to plug our Mata Hunt Woods Urban Wild reopening that's happening this Friday from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. Family-friendly event, free to the public. Uh, and yeah, we just want to showcase the amazing work, uh, that our colleagues have been doing here at Mata Hunt Woods and wanted to plug it here. So I can also drop a link to the event page in the chat for anyone that might be interested. And Eleanor, if you can move to the next slide. Thank you. Yeah. And also just want to remind folks here that our Phase 3 Wetlands Regulations are currently open and we are ho- holding an October 29th Community Information Session to discuss, uh, these draft regulations. It won't be structured as a regular public hearing. Um, so also opening this up to Commissioners who want to attend as a member of the public. Uh, yeah, so hopefully we see a couple of people here.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so first item on the agenda this evening is Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 0062049 and Boston File Number 2025-021 from CDW Consultants on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for the proposed renovation to the existing U.S. Army Signal Corps Station Building, including the installation of a new concrete sidewalk, repaving of the parking lot, regrading to redirect, redirect stormwater and replacement of the existing stairs and porches at 2010 William J. Day, Boulevard, Castle Island, South Boston, uh, resource areas or land subject to coastal storm flowage, and 100-foot buffer to coastal bank. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Hi, I'm here on behalf of the project. My name's Kim Barnett from LDA Architecture and Interiors.
Great. Um, anyone else you want to introduce?
Yes, there is a number of us here actually. Um, the Robin Fitch and Barbara from DCR are here on behalf of the client and then we have our civil engineers from CDW as well.
Fantastic. Okay, the floor is all yours.
Great. Thank you. Thanks. Um, so thank you so much for having us. Um, I'm going to go through this relatively quickly and then we have our plans for the building and the site at the end that we can refer to if anyone has questions and the rest of my team hopefully will help at that point. Um, so if you could go to the next slide. Uh, we're here to talk about the Signal Corps building. Um, I wanted to just briefly go through what are the renovation goals are for the building, talk about the environmental considerations and why we're here tonight, um, and then give a little bit of context to Castle Island and its important role in the DCR park system, a little bit about the history of the Signal Corps building, um, its current condition, and then what we're proposing to do. Um, and then obviously answer questions and go through anything after that. Um, next slide. So the goal of the project is to renovate the Signal Corps building. Um, there's a good number of, um, issues to address on the exterior and also with the structure itself due to its age. Um, there are deficiencies in structural building envelope and accessibility. And this is high on DCR's priority list, um, to get done hopefully by April of next year due to, um, the upcoming 25th, uh, 250th Anniversary celebrations that are going to be happening on Castle Island. Um, if you could go to the next slide, um, as I'm sure you, you are aware, based off of our, um, submission, the reason that we are here to talk to you today is that the site is, um, located within the 100-foot buffer zone for the coastal beach resource area and also within the land subject to coastal storm flowage. Um, so these bullet points here are straight out of our submission, but, um, we are, um, not doing any work within the coastal beach itself nor within the 20-foot, 5-foot waterfront area and all of the work is being done in a previously developed area. Um, uh, and then, um, you know, we are not altering this, the sediment transport, the literal drift, or, um, altering the form of the coastal beach. Um, the site grading is being designed to improve the local drainage patterns and with regard to, um, flooding in the coastal storm flowage, we are providing compensa- compensatory volume for, uh, the volumes being built within that area, which are the accessible ramp, the stairs, and a small amount of site regrading. And all of that obviously is shown on the drawings, which we'll get to, um, at the end of this. But I just wanted to, um, on the next slide, please, um, I just wanted to give everybody the context for, uh, Castle Island itself and how this building plays into how the park runs. So Castle Island, I'm sure a lot of people are very familiar with. It is one of the most popular parks, um, that DCR manages. Um, that, you know, they have tens of thousands of visitors every year. Uh, you know, up to 1,000 visitors an hour has been tracked at this park. So incredibly busy park and the role that the Signal Corps Station, um, plays is it's really the base for the DCR staff to help maintain and run this very busy property. Um, there are also, uh, environmental police that work out of this building, especially for special events. So making sure that we can bring it up to a more functional state and make it, um, really useful for the staff and the environmental police is really top priority to making the park run, um, as best as it can. And as I mentioned, um, this is particularly important to DCR right now because they're planning for a lot of really big events, um, related to the 250th Anniversary. In particular, Castle Island is going to host the return of the tall ships, which will be amazing. And, um, you know, they're working really hard to make sure that the park, um, is in its best shape and part of that is making sure that this building can serve it and also, um, be appropriately renovated within the, the context of. Um, so if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. Just a little bit on the history of the building itself. So, um, the Signal Corps Station was built in the 19, in 1929 and expanded in 1938 and it served as, uh, base for radio signal during World War II. Um, it's been part of DCR's property, um, since the 1960s when they took over Castle Island. Um, and it is important historically as one of the two remaining war areas, era structures, um, at Castle Island. These are some great historical photos that sort of show you its original condition. Um, and then if you go to the next slide, um, we can look at sort of what it, what its current condition is. Um, you know, it does a lot of hard work with all the amazing staff on the property, but it's definitely in a condition that needs to be upgraded to serve the park as best as possible. Um, in particular, access to the immediate area around the building is challenging, um, because there is a large puddle there that's formed whenever there's a rainfall. And then also the building itself, the front porch, um, is in poor shape and obviously not accessible because it's only, um, able to be used, um, accessed by stairs. And then the condition of the envelope is really starting to deteriorate from water penetration and then the resulting holes lead to animal infestation. And both of those things together really start to quickly deteriorate the exterior finishes, but also the building structure. Um, so addressing these things are the key part of bringing this building, um, up to a condition that can serve the park really well. Um, there's a couple, you know, specific things we're working on addressing that are identified in the next slide. You know, uh, so luckily the roof and the foundation are in good condition and that's sort of key to keeping everything working and running. But the siding, the trim, the eaves, the windows have gotten to a point that they need full replacement and that's a big part of what we're trying to do, um, on the property. So the puddle in the front, the access ramp, and then these improvements to the perimeter, um, building envelope are kind of the big key pieces of what we're working on. Um, and then if you could go to the next slide, um, this is again the current condition. Um, you can kind of understand it in its context on the southern end of Castle Island. Um, so this is what it looks like now and then ideally after the renovation, if you go to the next slide, um, this is a rendering of the work that we're going to be doing. So, um, the key things identified here are the new accessible ramp, the improved grading in the driveway to help with the large puddle. Um, you know, those are kind of the key things that are, um, affecting the outside of the property, the building. Uh, we did want to make sure we identified that none of the surrounding trees will be affected by the work that we're doing here. Um, but you, you can see even in a rendering, obviously, um, cleaning up the site and renovating the front of this building will have a big impact on how it's viewed, um, throughout the park. Um, I have a couple drawings here we could go through just really briefly. Uh, these are the existing plans. So, uh, it's a two-level building, uh, the basement on the left, the first floor on the right. And if you go to the next slide, you can see where we are making changes. So the changes here, um, we're adding that accessible ramp on the front of the, um, building that you saw on the renderings. We are also adding, um, some additional, uh, stairs on the backside of the building to make them, um, uh, egress compliant. There are currently stairs back there, but, uh, they're quite narrow and hard to use. And so those are the two spots that we're adding volume to the exterior of the building and the compensatory volume that we're providing in exchange is opening up the crawl space that's identified in white there with flood vents on both sides to allow the flow of water under the building, um, in that location. Um, and, uh, the calculations were obviously included in the submission, but there's more than many, many times more volume under the building than there is what we're building on the outside of the building. So I think this is also thinking towards the future, um, you know, to have this available volume should there be need for it. Um, and then if we look at the outside of the building, which is our next slide here, it just sort of reiterates the changes that will be seen from the outside, um, existing on the left, proposed on the right, where we have the, the new ramp and the extended back porch. And then moving to the site plan in our next slide, um, the existing site, uh, is identified here. Some key things, um, that dark dashed black line is our limit of work, which, uh, corresponds with the existing chain link fence. So we're not changing the chain link fence and that's also our erosion control line. And then we have identified the spot there, um, with the square on it, that is our, uh, construction staging and storage area and that is on a currently paved area of the site. Um, when the renovations are done, which is on the next slide here, um, we, uh, will be, uh, slightly reducing the impervious area, uh, reshaping the driveway and providing, um, a concrete path from the driveway to that new accessible ramp that you can see. Um, and then finally, it's probably hard to see on this last slide, the next one, um, you know, the slight regrading, um, around the driveway to help with the puddle that happens right at the gate entry and moving the stormwater, um, off the paved area and into the grass, um, surrounding the driveway, um, to help with, with that puddling issue. Um, so that was a really quick overview, uh, but we just wanted to make sure everybody sort of got our, uh, feedback on what we're working on. And then I know DCR is on the call, um, and so is CDW. So we're happy to answer any questions or go back to anything that would be helpful to dig into more.
Great. Thank you. Looks fantastic. Um, what an improvement. Okay, um, just want to remind members of the public, uh, if you want to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and then star six to unmute yourself or you can send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. Um, I don't really have any questions on this. Um, DeeDee, what do you, what do you have?
Uh, just noting that, uh, Concom staff did a site visit here on October 16th, uh, but we don't have any further notes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, you said you're doing drainage improvements. Is that simply shedding water onto neighboring lawn?
Yes, there are no drainage structures on the property currently, so it's just, um, adjusting how the water flows right in that, um, area of the driveway to move the water.
Yeah, and how much lawn is going to be able to take up that impervious area?
It's a wonderful question. I'm hoping someone from CDW would be able to, uh, chime in and, and answer that. Pietra, are you?
I'm here. Can you repeat that question, please?
Uh, how much lawn area is available when you shed the impervious area of, uh, 500 square feet? How big is this lawn that you're dumping the water on?
Oh, so it's, um, pretty much regressing the, like, the north part of the building and then the, the west part of the building? Just so that it's not ponding like on the, on the entrance there. Everything's already grass, um, pretty much. And we're taking some of the impervious area out of it and converting to grass. So that's what, um, pretty much what we're, um, shedding for the, the water from the ponding to the.
I guess, I guess the question is how much grass the area is there? Is it a 10 by 10 or is it a 500 by 500?
Oh, jeez. Uh, that is a good question. I don't have that out of the top of my head. I can look for it. Um, I can look for you in just a second.
Yeah, it's definitely the larger of those two. So if you could go, um, uh, if we could go back to the site plan, everything that isn't, uh, uh, maybe one more back. I think it's easier to read. So the, the driveway is that sort of T-shaped, um, piece right inside the fencing. Everything else surrounding this building is grass. So it's, it's a quite large area. Um, and as Pietra said, we're actually reducing, um, the impervious. So everything that is grass will remain grass and then there's a little bit more that's coming.
I can tell you like an exact length in just a second. If you give me just one moment, so I can open up the plan and measure it.
Yeah, so the, the thing is DCR with their MS4 permits, et cetera, for the whole island, you know, have certain requirements and generally we try to encourage. It's got nothing to do with the water and sewer in Boston, but encourage infiltration of this water to take care of phosphorus and other bacteria issues, not that there's any seagulls hanging around. So, uh, I was just wondering why you didn't try to put the water into an infiltration chamber is what I was getting at. That's.
I believe, um, there are no structures nearby that we could connect into. Um, and I think maybe Kim can, um, expand a little bit more. There is, um, some historical, like, preservation, um, archaeological permitting that we would need if we have to excavate the site. So, uh, we were trying to make as less impact as we could, especially because the CR is trying to get this project going for next year. Uh, so we were trying to avoid certain, um, that, that kind of work.
Right.
Hey, Robin, um, from DCR, I think you wanted to chime in on that as well.
Yes. Good note, Warren.
Um, hi, this is Barbara Farina, uh, speaking, DCR. Um, we have been working very closely with PAL, a archaeological, um, consultant. The, most of the island is highly sensitive and in particular around this building, they've identified, um, areas that, uh, are extremely sensitive and we are, and we're involving them with, uh, any digging or any penetrations of the ground. We have to have those monitored. So we were very, uh, cognizant of that and trying to, to remove paved area and just shift the water off the broken pavement where it collects. Yeah, the, trying to avoid any digging whatsoever on the site.
So the, the other issue I had was a compensatory storage, which I don't think you're required to do. Is that actually underground or is it just the area of the ground? You're letting it form under the, under the building? I was a little confused with what that is.
So we're, there was a, we're letting it flow under the building through, um, previously there were four windows into a crawl space and we would be changing those into the flood vents. So it's not, it's not a basement, it's a crawl space. So it's at, um, you know, the, the elevation of the grade.
So is that great? Okay.
Yeah, from, from grade to the finished floor, just that volume there.
Yeah, so it's really not compensatory storage, you're just letting it flow under the building.
Um, I guess I don't understand the distinction of what you're asking.
Well, generally storage, you hold something in a pot. So you store it. You're simply letting the water flow under the building should it need to flow, if the tide comes high or something.
Which currently it can't do because it's blocked. Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it'll blow through the windows or something, so that doesn't matter. Anyway, that's it. That's all I had.
Okay, so and I got it length, um, it's like about 20 feet and one side by 22. And then the other side is more or less like 35, um, by 25, more or less. Cause there's like, kind of, um, there's a, like a shed in the way, um, so it goes like to, through an air, um, space as it gets closer to the shed.
Yeah, I, I was just, I was just trying to make the point that it can then shed onto other DCR property on Castle Island without sheet flowing directly into the bay. So the opportunity is the water can get into the infiltrate to a grass area. I wasn't talking about just your property. Uh, just your site rather. It's all DCR property. Fine, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Laney?
Yeah, I had some sort of related questions, um, about the infiltration capacity of the existing, um, turf. And I wondered both, um, for the areas that were paved that are being converted to grass, you know, what is the sort of decompaction strategy of those? Um, and then is, has there been any infiltration testing done on the existing grass?
Should I answer that first one? That second question first. Uh, Robin and Barbara, I'm not aware of infiltration testing that has been done. I know you've been working on the property a lot. Is there any not from within our scope that has been done there? You're muted.
Hi, Kim Barnett here. Um, not that we're aware of at this time. I would say it looks pretty good, although we do get large numbers of people out there. Um, the grass is green. It looks good. There doesn't seem to be areas that are either burnt out or, um, heavily compacted.
Part of our project, I'm not sure that we are, we had specified a decompaction strategy for the, that area of grass, or am I wrong? Pietra?
I don't, I'm, I'm trying to remember. I don't think so. Um, cause that's usually part of the construction where they, um, cause they, anyway, they're going to be going with like the equipment in and out of the site. So some of the areas there are, um, paved. Um, I'm trying to remember here and I'm also going to look at the plan a little bit closer if there's any notes about that. But it's usually just once construction is done, um, I think the contractor, um, kind of do like little excavation, um, to uncompacted or something like that. I don't remember exactly.
Oh, excavation.
Not, uh, not excavation, sorry. Um, give me one second here.
So you're saying it'd be in the construction documents?
It would be, um, I guess more like under, yes.
Yeah, okay. So we, we would want to see those in the file. Um, and so I think, um, those would be a pre-construction submittal. So staff would be able to flag that and Commissioner Laney, um, let you know what they, what they find out. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds good. We'll have to think it up now. I think, um, let's see. I had one other comment on the tree protection. Um, it looked fairly minimal and I, I would just like to see that more generous. Um, especially in areas that, you know, it looks like there's a tree fairly far from the actual work. So, you know, I think it's just beneficial to make it more generous so you don't get, um, construction vehicles parking against that tree. Um, and then one question unrelated, but in the NOI, I thought it mentioned that a second crawl space was going to receive flood vents in a future phase. Is that correct? And I just carry, curious when that second phase, um, was expected to happen.
Previously planned, I think we were identifying that if we needed additional space, there is a second crawl space. So we could, we could do the same thing we're doing here, but that phase has not been identified or, or started yet.
See, okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Estes Smargiazi?
I don't have any specific comments on the, the, the grass or the, the lawn, but I, I noted that you talked about cleaning up the site. Uh, the after rendering looked great with lots of grass and a clean fence line all the way around it. Uh, the before pictures had a lot of stuff. Um, in my experience is anytime you have a fence, um, stuff accumulates inside it, um, particularly, um, if you don't have other storage. What's DCR's plan for all the stuff that they're currently storing there? If they don't have a good plan, we can anticipate it all.
Um, I can address that, I think, Stephen, this is.
Uh, one season later, so, sorry.
Um, Stephen, this is Robin Fettig at DCR and I think I can address that. A lot of that storage has come from the sailing center, which we're a huge proponent of, but we don't really like to store their old boats. And I believe before construction starts and Raul Silva is also with us, I, I understand that we are building, um, we are just providing a fenced-in area at the sail center and moving those boats to that location.
We're just move, we're going to move the clutter, but at least it won't be around this building. That's, I mean, I suppose that's an improvement.
It's, they're, they're actually don't belong to us, so we, we.
They don't belong to us.
Yeah, I understand.
All center to even touch them.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
I guess I had similar concerns. I think it's unusual.
Uh, I can't think of a time when somebody was doing parking lot paving where they didn't, uh, and there's no treatment where they didn't install some, I guess I, I, I take issue with calling it an improvement that it'll now sheet off the pavement where people park onto grass rather than staying where it is. Um, but I, I guess I just, I'd go back to Commissioner Sullivan, whether I don't, I, I can't really picture where this is going and, and whether you think that is sufficient. And if you do, then, then I'm fine.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's sufficient. Um, but that'll come up when we vote.
Um, okay, can we, can we talk about it now? What would be, what would be the solution to this? What would we like to see?
Well, I'd like to see what they're doing between the roof runoff and the impervious areas. DCR has generally, and all of us in Massachusetts, put this water and we infiltrate it. D C R has generally, and all of us in Massachusetts, put this water and we infiltrate it. If we put it on grass, we gotta show that the grass can actually take not just the rain that falls on the grass, but the rain that falls the the large volume that comes from the impervious surface. And so how are they handling it? And that should be a fairly simple movement by the engineer to say, well, yeah, the grass can handle it, this is why. You know, the first inch of storage, and that's that's just the standard. And I'm just surprised that D C R wouldn't have mandated that, but.
Robin, um, any response to that? Because I think it sounds like we're gonna be continuing uh to get that information unless you have it tonight.
Um, I'm not sure that I have it tonight, Michael. We could show the overview of the park if we can go back to that one slide. This is a lot like acres and acres of grass. Yeah, that helps too, that one. Um, acres and acres of grass around the site. Um. I do think if you want us to take a quick look to just say that it can accept this additional water, note that where it's currently pawning, it's all broken up pavement right now, reducing the pavement, so that again will help. But if you'd like more information, I think it would be easy on that one topic to provide uh through our engineers, some information that the ground can accept this little bit of water from this reduced paved area.
Okay, I I just wanted for the record.
Yes.
Right right now, you're just saying, believe me.
Yes. No, I think that makes sense, Commissioner.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Herbst, anything else?
Uh, so people are gonna, this is a parking lot that's gonna be used for vehicles?
Um, currently, if I could just respond to that, um, Commissioner Herbst, um, it is just our staff vehicles. I believe it's an electric truck and a Kubota. It's for our operations staff. It's not public, it's not public parking whatsoever. It's for our main and staff.
Okay, well, I guess, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, it exists now and we're not changing number of vehicles that will be parking there at all. It'll remain the same.
Okay, well, it sounds like you will owe us some more information, so I guess I just would like you to speak to what happens if there's a spill or something from a vehicle, so.
Oh, yes, certainly. We will have spill protection.
Well, uh, okay, your plan is for it to go into the grass, so that that's what I'm concerned about, but I'll I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so Robin, I think that's another deliverable regarding spill protection, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, um, Dee Dee, did you see any hands from the public? I have not.
Nope, and there's nothing in our inbox.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to continue this hearing uh until our next hearing.
So moved.
Wait a second. Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan.
Hi.
Commissioner Linnae.
Hi.
Commissioner Estes Smargiazi.
Hi.
Commissioner Herbst.
Hi.
And I vote I. Okay, carries five, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Take care. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, let's see, what is it? It's uh unassigned uh D E P in Boston file numbers uh from Child's Engineering on behalf of Poseidon Enterprises for the proposed replacement of deteriorated deteriorated um sections of an existing fender system along a pier face as well as repairs to structural timber piles and timber pile caps at eighty-eight Sleeper Street in South Boston. Uh, resource areas land under ocean. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
I'm here on behalf of uh Poseidon Enterprises. Um, I'm also joined by Alex Morris with uh Barking Crab. Uh, my name is Matt Soul. I'm with Child's Engineering.
Great, thank you, Matt. Floors are yours.
All right, so this is the location. It's at eighty-eight Sleeper Street in Boston. It's right next to that, uh, the abandoned uh uh Turnian Bridge uh right on the uh edge of the seaport area. Uh, you can go to the next slide. This just shows the location of it. You can go to the next slide. So this project involves just routine maintenance. Um, similar work was done about, I think it was back in twenty thirteen. Um, but it was only done to some of the piles. There was also in that bottom left photo, you can see some of it. There was some burn damage to this pier, um, and further repairs were done at some point to repair that. Some of the burn damage remains, but it's it's mostly just visual. It doesn't really uh affect the piles and the uh pile caps as well. Um, but the pro- the project specifically is addressing uh the deterioration of the piles, which you can see in that first photo on the top left. Um, a lot of it is underwater. Uh, most of its marine bore damage combined with this fungal decay at the top that you see in this photo. What we're gonna be doing there is posting the piles, so cut out a section, install a new timber section, and then install a concrete jacket over it to protect it. Um, the other one is the pile caps. On the offshore end, a lot of the pile caps have the fungal decay that you see in that top right photo. We're just gonna be sistering new pile caps, which is both of those repairs were done in the previous repairs back in twenty thirteen or so. Um, another one is the cross bracing, the diagonal bracing between piles that you see in the bottom left there. Uh, about every other bent has that deteriorated because in the previous repairs, they repaired every other bent. So now the other ones are starting to go. And then uh the last repairs are to some of the fender piles. I believe there's five or six of them that we will be pulling and replacing because they have deteriorated. Um, some of them are wild. Uh, you can go to the next slide. This just shows an aerial view um of the uh exactly where the work will be done. Uh, it's just a pile-supported pier. You can go to the next slide. So this this is just another image. This shows the uh, I believe it's hard to read on this, but the uh dotted line there. Yep, that that's where the sea wall is. So there's a granite block sea wall behind all the piles. We are not touching that at all. Um, you can go to the next slide. So here's the pile plan. Um, it includes the defects at the bottom, but as you can see, there's there's a lot going on here. Um, a lot of a lot of defects that are being repaired. Um, I I believe in total, it's uh, I have it right here. Thirty-nine piles that are being posted. Um, six fender piles are being replaced. Uh, you can go to the next slide. So this shows, oh, yeah, this shows both the existing and the proposed section. So on the left are the two existing sections. Um, the only difference between those two is whether or not they were repaired back in twenty thirteen. Uh, so you can see in the middle one, those are the ones that have been repaired. Um, starting at the top, the pile cap, you can see there's a little uh section on the offshore end that has been uh, we sistered in pile caps over the uh first offshore three bends, Alpha Bravo Charlie. Um, that is being done again um to the ones that still need it. And then the other thing is the uh uh post-repair with the concrete encasement. That's shown on the far right. That concrete encasement here is shown just on the bottom uh three feet, but that's actually gonna come all the way up to the top of the uh pile and also this fender pile here. Some of them are attached directly like that, but a lot of them are a little further spaced. So there's actually space to get the uh jacket up all the way. All right, uh, you can go to the next slide, and I believe that is it. Uh, yep, that's it.
Thank you. So, um, uh, I don't think I really have any questions. Uh, D M F, um, Dee Dee uh seems to be okay with this.
Correct, they had no resource area concerns here.
Okay, and uh, Matt, you did not get a D E P file number?
We have not gotten it yet. We did submit for it and they acknowledged they received it, but it hasn't come through yet.
Okay, so we'll have to continue this. Um, and then on your terminology, sistering uh caps, uh, is that another way to say installing new caps on old piles?
Uh, so like, yeah, there there will be essentially you put two new members on either side of it. I believe they are uh six by twelves. Um, so it'll be a six by twelve on either side of it. That's gonna go from that third pile into the uh from the first pile to the third pile in, and you bolt through the existing pile cap.
Got it, okay.
Uh, there'll also be some members going across there on top of the piles just to help with the bearing where that uh new pile cap is gonna sit.
Okay, understood, thank you. Okay, Dee Dee, anything else from you?
Yeah, uh, just wanted to note that staff uh did a site visit on October second. And uh, we noticed that there's existing debris there at the seafloor, right under the piles. And Matt, just wondering if uh during construction, if it would be possible to try to clean up some of that debris? Just to remember.
Yeah, I I don't see why not. So that when we do these uh posts, these these posts have to be installed under the mud line, so we'll be basically putting down divers to remove some of the debris temporarily. It generally just gets pushed to the side and then once it's replaced, pushed back in. Uh, sorry, not debris, mud, the mud sediment, but also while they're down there, there's they they should, and there's no reason not to remove some of that debris.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
Uh, no, no questions.
Okay, just want to remind members of the public, if you want to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff at c c at boston dot gov. Um, Commissioner Linnae?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Estes Smargiazi.
And no questions on this item.
Commissioner Herbst?
Uh, I just wanted to clarify, because your your N O I says that you'll use a silk curtain and other best practices. And I think it's based on that, that D M F said they had no issues. So is that accurate that you'll be using a silk curtain and are there other plans that you have?
Uh, silk curtain is kind of the main one that we were thinking. We'll we'll basically encapsulate this entire area with it. Uh, that that's the only thing that we have uh have planned at this point, but we'll also discuss with the contractor. And if you guys have any other suggestions, we'd be happy to implement them.
Okay, I don't, I don't think I would be the one to have them, but um just want to make sure when we're done, we get those in the special conditions. Thanks.
Okay, um, what in the special conditions, the silk curtain?
Yes, the silk curtain.
Okay, okay. Okay, Dee Dee, any raised hands? I don't see any.
No raised hands and nothing in our inbox.
Okay, so with that, I would uh entertain a motion um to close the hearing and issue a order of conditions with uh special conditions that um the existing debris will be cleaned up.
Chair, Chair Parker, there's no D E P file number assigned yet.
And I said that already. Okay, so why don't I do this? I'd entertain a motion to continue the hearing for two weeks.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Hi.
Okay, Commissioner Linnae.
Hi.
Commissioner Estes Smargiazi.
Hi.
Commissioner Herbst.
Hi.
And I vote I. That carries five, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six twenty eighty-one and Boston file number twenty twenty-five dash zero three nine from Weston and Sampson on behalf of the City of Boston Parks and Recreation Department for the proposed temporary flood protections, including cast-in-place concrete retaining walls, deployable flood barriers and general site improvements at sixty-four Sleeper Slee- Sleeper Street in South Boston. Uh, resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage, one hundred foot buffer coastal bank, one hundred foot buffer to coastal beach and twenty-five foot waterfront area. Um, this is also Martin's Park, right?
Chair Parker, just a reminder, I'll be accusing myself.
Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, um, who's here on behalf of the proponent?
I am here, um, Alex Gaspar from Weston and Sampson. And I'm joined by Casania Aquaviva from the city and Cassandra Martinez also from Weston and Sampson.
And Richard McGinnis is also here from the city.
Great.
And we have Lauren Bryant from the Parks Department as well, the property owner.
Who's uh uh presenting?
I can start us off.
I can, so a little bit of planning background, Alex.
Okay.
She's gonna, Alex is just gonna do like the first two slides, Casania, like just the very introductory, and then you can jump in.
Sure. So just sort of introducing the project. Um, on the behalf of the city, we are presenting the interim flood protection project occurring at Martin's Park. We did receive a D E P file number um and a Boston file number, both came back with no comments. Um, or at least no comments from D E P, and we have addressed comments from Boston. Next slide. Our contact from the city of Boston is, as mentioned, Casania Aquaviva. And I am here covering the environmental permitting, and I'm joined by Cassandra Martinez, the project manager. Casania, if you want to take it away and give them the background, it'd be great.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Um, it's a very complex site with um significant flood risk. That's immediate and um and multi-layered coastal resiliency strategy that the city is implementing. So I did want to give a little bit of a planning um context for this proposed deployables before um the team here uh will cover technical details. Alex, next slide, please. So you are aware of the coastal resiliency planning work that the city has conducted over the years that informs um a whole host of near-term priority coastal resiliency projects that we're implementing all across um the Boston coastal waterfront. Next slide, Alex. So here are the those priority projects um that we're implementing across the five neighborhoods. Next slide. So the city is acting on um three concurrent fronts. So in terms of the storms that we're seeing today, we're strengthening our um oper- uh operational capacity and emergency management and response capacity. In terms of flooding, that's gonna materialize before the end of this decade. We are implementing the above-mentioned um near-term priority coastal resiliency projects. And then in terms of medium and long-term risk, we're working with Army Corps of Engineers on the coastal storm risk management study that's gonna hopefully open up the city to federal funding. So that's all great, but the problem is that the near-term uh priority coastal resiliency projects do take quite a bit of time, especially in the context of federal funding uncertainty. And we do need to provide that urgent protection to our residents today. And so the interim flood protection plan that this deployable is part of uh is meant to bridge that gap between what we're doing today versus what we're gonna be doing um to address the twenty thirty um flood risk. And so it's kind of like the bridge between those two speeds um that we're working at. Next slide, Alex. So we took another critical look at the near-term flood pathways, twenty thirty um flood pathways to see which ones of them lend themselves well to deployable flood protection um solutions. Next slide. And while doing so, we'll look at a whole host of factors from land ownership to the number of stakeholders we have on site to potential, the length of the alignment, independent effectiveness of this alignment. And we arrived at this list of priority sites. Um, one in um Charleston Main Street, and we presented this project about a month ago. And so thank you for your approval of that project. And so today's presentation is focusing on the rest of the uh, the three priority deployables that we're gonna be implementing across um the Fort Point Channel area. And so Martin Spark being one of them. Uh, and then the other one is across the Boston Children's Museum site. And the third one is between three or three Congress Street to two hundred fifty Summer Street um in Sleeper Sleeper Street Extension Alleyway. Next slide, Alex. So we really see those three Fort Point Channel deployables as one undertaking because only if implemented together, they can provide neighborhood-scale protection that we need. And so Martin Spark Deployable is one of those three. Um, so um the Boston Children's Museum site and Sleeper Street Extension site is gonna come to your attention a bit later. It's still in the planning and design phase. Um, and so next slide. When implemented together, hopefully, we're gonna address um the flood risk between Summer Street uh bridge and the waterfront in this way. So um that's our desired future, near-term future. Next slide. And obviously, this interim flood protection plan for the Fort Point Channel area goes hand in hand with the longer-term vision for coastal resiliency that we have for the Fort Point Channel neighborhood that involves uh Boston Children's Museum waterfront master plan. So uh while designing this um deployable across um their site So while designing this deployable across their site, we're obviously coordinating with the museum's team to make sure that this deployable solution serves as a foundation for their longer-term master plan and complements it. We are looking at alternative approaches to what we worked on as part of the FEMA PDM burn project that, you know, we don't have funding available from the federal government anymore. But the city is looking into alternative approaches. It could take either on its own there or in partnership with Army Corps of Engineers in the near term. And then obviously, the Boston Water and Sewer Tide Gate at the mouth of the channel that also informs Army Corps' planning work on the Sirm Storage Gate that they have just recently proposed in the public meeting in South Boston as part of their South Boston Alignment Plan. So that's the context. And now I'm going to give it, give it over to Cassandra and Alex to walk you through the technical details of the project.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. So yeah, just a quick locus. This is located at sixty-four Sleeper Street, which is Martin's Park, bordered by Seaport Boulevard and Congress Street. Next slide. Another closer look at it. So it's adjacent to the Children's Museum site, right along the Harbor Walk. Next slide. So the proposed project, as Casania introduced, is an interim deployable project. And so we're going to be installing a stop log deployable across the walkway in the center of Martin's Park. There's an existing pedestrian bridge and this will go approximately right underneath that. And so we are planning for the twenty seventy-one percent annual exceedance probability flood in this park with the deployable. So the top elevation is planned to be twenty-two point five. The existing ground is about sixteen point three. So kind of depicted with this person, it's about a six-foot barrier. So there will be a foundation installed, like a footing installed beneath the existing walkway to support this stop log barrier and prevent overturning during a flood. And then there will be supporting concrete walls adjacent on either side to tie into the adjacent landscape. Next slide, please. So this kind of looks at either side. There's a lot of granite blocks in this area, particularly on if you're looking from the water at the left side. So these photos kind of just show the existing condition and then proposed condition, looking to the north and the south. So there'll be a permanent concrete sill at the top of the footing across the walkway for when these barriers are deployed. And then in a permanent condition, regardless of deployment or not, there will be the walls supporting, like they're basically piers that'll support the stop logs on either side. And then that will be constructed within the existing granite blocks. And then we plan to build up particularly on the south side to maintain the, you know, character of the park. We'll be putting in additional granite blocks to kind of hide the appearance of those piers and make it consistent with as consistent as how it looks today. Next slide, please. So briefly, yeah, when this is deployed, which will be deployed, you know, if a flood scenario is anticipated, it will block pedestrian access via this pathway specifically, but there will still be continued access in the park in other scenarios or from other points. Next slide, please. So this is just kind of a cut sheet showing the stop logs. So there will be two posts that'll be like temporary posts that'll be installed along with the stop logs when deployed. It's about a fourteen-foot span. And as I mentioned, it's about six point two feet above grade. And then the logs will tie into the posts on either end, which will be made of concrete. Next slide, please. So this is just kind of a plan view. It's a bit hard to see, but it just shows the resource areas as well as our area of work. So the largest excavation is going to be within the existing walkway and beneath it to construct that footing to support the work. And then there will be work on either slope, more so on the left side of this plan view or the south side to tie back towards the existing bridge abutment on the right side as well, but it's a little bit closer to the existing abutment. And we can go to the next slide and I think I'll turn it back over to Alex for the resources.
Sounds good. Thank you, Cassandra. So there are several wetland resources that fall on the project parcel. That includes approximate coastal beach in yellow, coastal bank in orange, the twenty-five foot waterfront area in blue, and then the hundred foot buffer zone in purple. I did want to take a quick minute to talk through these just because I know there are some questions. So especially on the coastal bank, which I know looks a little funky. But on the northern part of Martin's Park, there is a two-to-one vegetated slope behind that seawall. So per Maskeep Coastal Banks policy, because those slopes are greater than four to one, the top of the coastal bank is the point above the hundred-year flood elevation where the slope flattens out to become less than four to one. So that is that point. On the southern part of the park, there the slopes behind are flatter than four to one and are also less than ten to one. So no coastal bank is present there. Next slide. Our FEMA flood map, as you can see, a portion of the site does fall within the flood zone. The flood zone does fall at ten feet NAVD eighty-eight or sixteen point four-six feet, Boston City Base. Next slide. This is just a summary of our wetland resource impacts. As mentioned, there are several resources on site, but we are only impacting land subject to coastal storm flowage and the hundred foot buffer to coastal beach and bank and a twenty-five foot waterfront area. Temporary impact is just from the temporary construction activity and the replacement of the concrete walkway. Whereas the permanent impact is the proposed flood barrier. And I believe that is our last slide, so would love to open it up to questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. So as far as the deployable itself, and I don't know if we've made it into a standard condition for projects such as this, but we like to see annual maintenance of the deployable to make sure that it's working. Commissioner Sullivan, did you have something? No. So I don't know, DeeDee, have we made that a standard condition or are we just making it a special condition as we go through these projects? We're getting a lot more of them, so we should probably make it a standard condition.
Yeah, at the moment, it's not a standard condition, so we've been adding it as a special condition.
Okay, so I'm sure we can pull it from the Charlestown special condition that we added a few weeks ago. And then just interested in as far as the captured floodwater there, like is, what are the effects? Where is, where is that water going? And we velocitizing any flows and what's been done to study that?
So generally, Martin's Park, when it was constructed, much of the park was built up so that like the elevation of the remainder of the park would be higher than the predicted flood elevation from twenty seventy. This walkway beneath is kind of one of, is like the remaining pathway through the park that could still allow for floodwaters to go through. And so I think by closing that pathway with these deployables, like the park as a whole will be, you know, hit that higher elevation. And so we don't expect any, you know, water to, and with this constructed and as well as the Children's Museum one and Sleeper Street, we don't expect water to be able to like come around the sides essentially and provide like higher velocity water or anything at any points. If that answers your question.
It does. I mean, my concern is, you know, deflection of floodwater to, let's say, the Children's Museum. I know it's quite a distance away. And it sounds like there is a plan for the entire stretch there. Okay, okay. No, I think that answers my question. DeeDee, do you have anything?
Just noting that staff conducted a site visit to the site on October sixteenth and we have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan, I assume you're going to have something to say about this.
Yeah, well, we've had a lot of discussions with BPDA, et cetera. So we're okay with them putting it where they're located, et cetera. But I constantly ask the question, once we build this, who's responsible to put this thing up? Where do you keep the pots? How do we guarantee the pots are going to be available when we need to deploy? So have we figured that out yet?
Commissioner Sullivan, so all of that is addressed in the standard operating procedure that we can certainly share with you. The idea is for all these three deployables to be stored on one side. And we're considering the garage behind the park for that. And discussed it with the friends of the park who do a lot of operations work there and are fully aware of this project. In terms of deployment, that's going to be coordinated through the Office of Emergency Management and we are still determining. Oh, no, no, no. For this park, that's going to be the parks staff that's going to deploy, operate and maintain this deployable going forward. And they do have experience like this in as Boston where they deploy the deployable in Greenway. So that's, 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 that part is easier than the Main Street deployable that we discussed a month ago.
Yeah, and I just would like to have on file with the ConCon when you get all that put together, the whole how does this work deal? So everybody knows where we can find it. That's all.
Correct.
Other than that, Chair, this, this to me is a very good idea, get it done now. The thing I'm really concerned with is when we put this wall in, just a concrete wall, since the park looks so beautiful, that even if you make fake stone to stick it on concrete formed work, they have that. Make it look like a natural setting, natural stone setting. I see you're moving the big ones. But if there's any concrete showing at all, take some cement and paste and glue and make it look like blocks.
Yeah, so we do plan to bring in like granite from these, the same quarry as the granite that's there now to build it up around where those like piers will be. There'll be like six by eighteen inch piers. And so we really, and we've had a lot of conversations with the Parks Department, the friends of the park and are very conscious of the appearance and how it is a really beautiful park. And so want to make sure we maintain that. But yeah, we'll be using actual stone.
No problem. And that was my only other concern is that we, when we leave it, it looks like it's all natural. Except for the day we get it deployed, then it looks like a barrier.
And also just to add to that, the original designers of the park have also been very involved. And so they're also working with us on those aesthetics as well.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm fine.
Great. Thank you. Just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff at cc@Boston.gov. Commissioner Estes Smargiazi?
No additional comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Nothing from me either. Thank you.
Okay, great. I don't see any hands raised. Do you, DeeDee?
No hands raised and nothing in the inbox.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue an order of conditions with the special conditions regarding the annual maintenance check of the deployable and submission to the Conservation Commission staff and the standard operating procedures that we discussed earlier.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Estes Smargiazi?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries four, nothing. Okay, thank you. Good luck and thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, request for an amendment to the original order of conditions for DEP file number zero zero six two zero four eight and Boston file number twenty twenty-five dash zero two zero from Weston and Sampson on behalf of the City of Boston's Parks Department and Parks and Recreation Department for the proposed flood mitigating improvements to the Mary Ellen Welch Greenway, including the installation of bioretention basins impermeable pavers, improvements to drains, catch basins and pipes, and the raising of low-lying areas at forty-four Marginal Street in East Boston. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. And Commissioner Laney will be sitting this one out as well, correct? Yes, she's taking a break. Okay, so who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Hi, I am Alex Dewire. I am with Weston and Sampson. I am also joined by our project manager Lynn Yee. And it looks like from Boston Parks and Recreation Department, Lauren Bryant will be covering any questions.
Great. Lauren's all yours.
Great. Next slide. Okay, so this is the Mary Ellen Welch Greenway Improvements Project. And we are requesting an amendment to the Order of Conditions that was originally issued on July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five. Next slide, please. Kind of already got into introductions before, but Amy Laney is the Boston Parks and Recreation Project Manager on this project. I'm Alex Dewire, Environmental Science and Regulatory Compliance portion of this presentation. And then Lynn Yee is also presenting on the technical aspects of things. Sean Vando is our stormwater engineer, however, he could not make it tonight. Next slide, please. So this is the project area for the Mary Ellen Welch Greenway Improvements Project. It's outlined in red on the topo map provided on the screen. This represents the limit of work for the project that has already been approved. It spans between Porter Street and Marginal Street. And it is approximately two thousand five hundred feet in length and three point four-four acres in size. I will now leave it to Lynn to get into the specifics of what has been previously approved already through the permitting process as well as what we are proposing in this amendment.
Great. Thank you.
And thanks, Alex. And thanks to Commissioner Parker. I think your introduction kind of captured the scope of what we've been proposing for this site. So on, on that side of things, the overall project, you know, what we're proposing in the plans have not changed in terms of design and engineering. So the design has remained the same and we've made some advancement, you know, further with parks review and with different like Boston street lighting reviews. So that's all been going pretty good. And we are continuing to, you know, get revisions for Boston Water Sewer. And hopefully they're in review and to get their approval before we start construction. So previously approved projects, I think next slide, we have a recap. If you advance to that one. So this is just a summary to help us recall what has been approved in terms of a project proposal. We're trying to propose more, you know, impervious surface and by narrowing down some of the past consolidating pathways and, you know, creating concrete boardwalks in certain areas to allow more stormwater storage. And, you know, through micrograding, we're also trying to elevate the pathways in certain areas, which is currently low-lying to lift them out of the flooding condition. We're increasing, you know, and improving the capacity in the gray and green infrastructure. So generally, you know, overall stormwater improvements for the site. And certainly, you know, a lot of great new park amenities, including plaza spaces with lighting improvement, like seating improvement, new planting and et cetera. So that's all still in our plan and has not been changed. So next slide should capture what we're here for today. So today, we're here to try to get your review and approval on this additional work we're aiming to do in order to, to understand and evaluate the subsurface conditions at the proposed boardwalks, which is a critical component of the project. So we're proposing to do five soil borings at each, at, you know, the location of each boardwalk, one at each boardwalk location in order to understand the subsurface condition. And then we'll have two temporary staging areas. And then we'll have two temporary staging areas to support that work. So the work that's included is also, there's a summary here. We will be using a truck mounted drill rig. I just want to flag that, that, you know, we did have further conversation with the contractor. So they, instead of like an ATV mounted truck, we are going to do a truck mounted drill rig instead of an ATV mounted drill rig, which is, I think, I believe it's the same size. It's like an eight by forty typical vehicle. That's not going to cause additional impact to the site. So they will be using a truck mounted drill rig to traverse along the existing pathway to be, you know, to perform these proposed boring locations. And they will bring terra mats and also wood cribbing to, to help protect the adjacent grassy area. So the borings will be drilled to the depths of twenty feet below existing grade through a four inch diameter casing. Soil within the casings will be washed to the ground surface with soil and water held in a tub adjacent to the drill rig. After we complete it, four borings will be backfilled. So we're, make sure that there's not going to be any additional material on site. One boring will be completed as a groundwater observation well and drilling water will be discharged to adjacent grassy areas. Sediments and erosion controls, we will have those in place. So they're indicated on the plans attached to the application. We'll have straw waddles. So again, I think that's a coordination item. We further discuss with the contractors, they will be using straw waddles instead of the compost filter tubes for sediment control and erosion control. So last but not least, the topsoil placement, you know, after we do the work, we'll certainly make sure to replace the, you know, the disturbed area, you know, reseed as needed to restore these impact area to pre-construction conditions. So we're not anticipating any permanent impacts to the concrete areas either. Because all the, I think on the plans, if you flag, if you flow to the next slide, they, yeah, so it's a little, but you know, we're happy to, you know, share a screen to a higher resolution of the plan, but these are the locations where the borings will be conducted. They're outside of the pavement areas and we made sure to double check the utility lines and subsurface conditions to avoid any conflict. And the next slide as well is showing the second portion of the work. So that's the, the last one that will be right next to the, this plaza area where we will be staging. I think that's pretty much it. And in terms of, you know, what we're proposing for this work. So next slide, I will hand it back to Alex, who can talk through just the impact and.
Great, thank you. So the entire project area, as it was previously approved, is located within sand, land subject to coastal storm flowage. These are the numbers associated with the previously approved wetland resource area impacts. No new impacts in addition to these numbers are proposed as part of the borings that we are proposing in this amendment. All proposed geotechnical impacts will be temporary in nature. And the proposed borings are located in areas already approved as permanent disturbance. Next slide, please. Again, this figure is just showing the FEMA map associated with the project area. And that land subject to coastal storm flowage is present. All proposed borings in this amendment will be temporary in nature and they will not result in any increased or additional impacts beyond those. Previously approved, all land subject to coastal storm flowage performance standards will also continue to be met. And with that, next slide. We will take any questions.
Great, thank you. Okay, so this is the hardest part of this job. I'm going to ask Lynn a very self-obvious question and I'm going to feel sheepish after you give me the answer, but what is micro grading?
It's, it's, that's a really great question. I, I think in, in my humble opinion, micro grading is, you know, grading that's not gonna, you know, it's very subtle that it's not very obvious, you know, in terms of, I guess, like visual and like actual elevation change. So like, say, if you have like a plaza and, you know, and or like a swell, so you have grades that are like, you know, very, it's, it's not like very visible to human eyes, like they almost seems flat, but like, or like there are things that are lowered by like, you know, just a little bit to allow drainage to work a little better. So like pitching, you know, the surface in a certain way. So like water will sheet flow in a direction that you want them to. And, you know, it's also like in swell design, like we sometimes grade it in a way. So like you undulate it. So like it will, you know, allow things to drain to a certain catch basin. And then like, you know, there's, you know, stormwater related aspect to it. I think that's, that's my experience with it. Like I'm happy to hear other thoughts or.
No, that's great. Thank you. Thank you. That, that was a great answer. And I guess going back to one of our earlier hearings, that term might apply to decompaction techniques. But so, okay, so I learned something. Another thing I just wanted to ask you while I have you here is the difference in performance value between straw waddles and compost filter tubes. You said you're going to use the straw waddles instead of. So what's the advanced pros and cons there?
I believe they don't, they don't have like a significant difference. And Alex, if correct me if I'm wrong, they should like perform like pretty much the same way. It's very often, you know, interchangeable, depending on what the contractor wants to do.
Okay, okay, fair enough. DeeDee, did you have anything on this?
Uh, we have no further comments.
Okay, thank you. Just want to remind members of the public, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. Commissioner Sullivan?
I have no comments.
Okay, Commissioner SS Smargiazi?
Uh, no, no comments.
Commissioner Herbst?
No comments, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't see any raised hands. Did we get any emails, DeeDee?
There's no emails.
Okay, and, okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to amend the order of conditions for, probably need to read the file number. The original order of conditions for DEP file number zero zero six twenty forty-eight and Boston file number twenty twenty five dash zero two zero.
So moved.
You have a second. Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay? Nope, sorry. Did it again. Commissioner SS Smargiazi?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
But I vote aye. That carries four nothing. Just to correct the record, Commissioner Lay is recused herself. I mistakenly called her name. Okay, thank you.
Um, just making sure that we're closing the hearing as well.
Um, yes, we are.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. There have been three continuances, continued notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one nine nine six and Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero two one. DEP file number zero zero six twenty twenty, twenty forty-two and Boston file number twenty twenty five dash zero one four. DEP file number zero zero six twenty seventy-three and Boston file number twenty twenty five dash zero three four. So with that, we will begin our regular meeting. The first item on the agenda is a certificate of compliance, request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six fifteen ninety-seven from Epsilon Associates on behalf of one thirty-five Morrissey Owner LLC for the renovation and landscaping improvements of the former Boston Globe Building located at one thirty-five Morrissey Boulevard. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. DeeDee, what do you have on this?
Yeah, so we have not heard back from the applicant just yet. We're waiting on them to install some fish plates on site. So we would recommend continuing the hearing tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next one is request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six twenty twenty-three and Boston file number twenty twenty five dash zero zero four from Weston and Sampson on behalf of the Boston Parks and Recreation Department for the widening of the existing batting cage located at McConnell Park, Springdale Street in Dorchester, resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. And Commissioner Linay is going to have to sit this one out as well. You should have just taken the rest of the night off.
I know.
Okay, DeeDee, what do you have on this?
Yeah, so we conducted a site visit on October sixteenth. And during the site visit, we just noted that it appears to be some washout of the batting cage material. It's going on to the existing pavement that's there, but we've been in communication with parks to try to remedy that. But for the most part, we recommend issuing the complete certificate of compliance and we have a few perpetual maintenance conditions too. Numbers fifty-nine, sixty-six, eighty-one, eighty-two, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-six and ninety-seven.
Okay, any questions from any commissioners? Okay, hearing none. I would entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance with the following perpetual maintenance conditions, fifty-nine, sixty-six, eighty-one, eighty-two, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-six and ninety-seven.
So moved.
You have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner SS Smargiazi?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that carries four nothing. Thank you. Okay, next item is administrative updates.
So we've got a few for you all tonight. First one is an administrative approval. Eleanor, if you can go back, yeah, thank you. If you can go back to the admin updates, thank you. So first one, fifteen NECO Harbor Walk sign. They're just looking to install one sign here and it'll have minimal permanent impacts within the resource areas of LSCSF, a hundred foot buffer to coastal bank and the twenty-five foot waterfront area. So we went ahead and issued an administrative approval, but we can answer any questions that commissioners might have.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, hearing none.
Great. And then also just wanted to note that at the previous hearing on October eighth, we had an enforcement order for coastal cement. So we have not heard anything yet from folks from coastal cement, but within our letter, we asked for their attendance tonight. So just opening that up to see if anyone from coastal cement is here.
Yeah, Bill Corcoran is on and Jennifer Small as well.
Great, thank you. Eleanor, did you want to take over for this part of the admin update?
Sure, yes. Please let me know if anything wonky happens with the slides while we have this conversation. Yeah, I, the commission knows this, DeeDee usually runs the slides. She is wonderful at it and I am questionable. So for this enforcement order, I'm happy to also connect offline to talk through timeline for next steps. But what we had asked for in the enforcement order, which the commission ratified at the last hearing, was to file an after-the-fact notice of intent for the work that was done, which included deckwork and the installation of a chain link fence. We don't need for those items to be removed, but we, we do need it to go through some form of permitting because of its modifications within the twenty-five foot waterfront area, land subject to coastal storm flowage, potential impacts to coastal bank or a hundred foot buffer to coastal bank. I think delineation and as built will tell us exactly which resource areas were impacted. But we would want to see that filed with us so that it can go through the commission's review and we can get more information on exactly what work was done there.
Okay, okay, so who's here for coastal?
Bill Corcoran and Jennifer Small.
Okay, okay, so I guess first question that we ask in cases like this is why weren't you aware that you were in a, you needed a wetlands permit here?
So we just purchased, we are a part of Heidelberg Material and we just purchased this property in Giant Cement in April. So we were unaware that this work was, was taking place. So that's our apologies. But yeah, we, we went through the, the process due diligence and didn't recognize that a fence was installed. So it was really just an oversight on our part that we didn't notice that and no permits were submitted. Obviously, moving forward, you know, we, we would definitely follow the processes to the T and make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that these processes are followed properly.
Okay, so was there when you purchased the property or purchased the business in the property?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, well, that's, you know, frankly, that's the best answer anyone's ever given us. So, okay. How long do you think it'll take you to get the NOI in?
I, I don't think it'll take long. I just need to touch base. I just got looped in on this. So I'm going to touch base with my legal team first thing tomorrow morning. And then I will get a guideline. I do have a call into Lena. I can call her back again tomorrow and firm up that deadline. But I would imagine it won't take us very long, you know, a couple of weeks to get that processed.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan, did you have anything? Any of the commissioners have any questions, any comments?
No. No, I don't have any questions, but I know where the mute button is now, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, okay, so I guess that's the course of action. So Bill will be in touch with you, Eleanor. And, okay, thank you for attending.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, any other administrative updates?
Yep, just one more. Eleanor, if you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So we, after last week's hearing, the commission decided to open up a sixty-day public comment period. So we went ahead and updated this timeline for you all. So again, next week, October twenty-ninth, we have the community info session. You're all welcome to attend. It won't be structured as a regular public hearing. So you can attend as members of the public. And on December fifteenth at five PM, that's when public comment letters are going to be due. And we've been collecting them through a form that Alice had created. And then we're also accepting letters submitted to our emails. And for January twenty-first, we're going to be holding a special hearing and I'll be sending out that Google invite to you all to discuss the revised draft regs.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions from any of the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Anything else, DeeDee?
I believe that's it.
Okay, thank you. So with that, um.
Just meeting minutes here.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I got it.
Thank you.
She thought you were about to adjourn us.
It sounded like it.
He had that tone.
I know, I know, thanks. Set him on the agenda. It's acceptance of meeting minutes from October eighth, twenty twenty-five. I looked them over. They're very well done, very few edits. Any questions from any commissioners on the minutes?
Just great reading, that's all.
It really is. Okay, so with that, I'd entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from October eighth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you. So Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner SS Smargiazi?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries five nothing. Okay, now, motion to adjourn by acclamation. Any objections? Okay, so DeeDee, thank you so much. You did a great job.
Thank you.
I don't know, I don't know who's handling the slides, but you might want to talk to that person. You know, a little training. But anyway. Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.